Okay. You all ready? All right. The November 3, 2025 Legislative Session of the Anorondale County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Mr. Smith will lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Please pray in a manner that is consistent with your faith, as I will pray in one that is consistent with mine. Dear Heavenly Father, we welcome you today, humble in our needs and a desire to serve you and the families and businesses who call our county home. Father, we ask for your favor to provide us grace in making informed and fair decisions. I pray for the flourishing of our community spiritually, socially, and economically. May we work together to create a place where all are valued, where justice and righteousness prevail, and where the needs of the most vulnerable are met. In your mighty and majestic name, we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about the lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Okay. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received 16 pieces which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Kyle Nimhard, Jigna Patel. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, you may also come up at this time. Go ahead.
Glenn Burney, Maryland. "What's in a name? That what should we call a rose by any other name would smell as sweet." Profound words that resonate to this day from Shakespeare's Romeo and Juliet. People may interpret that as an eloquent statement by a young girl in love, simply indulging in the characteristics of a rose. Reality is, the statement is a metaphor to suggest that name does not define true nature. Let's say I propose a bill with sweeping reforms. The reforms primarily focus on relieving developers of accountability to the impacts that they have on existing neighborhoods when their sole purpose is to make a profit. All this for developers who don't even live in the neighborhoods that they're impacting. All we have to do is give this legislation a name that evokes a noble cause. The reality is that this example is not a hypothetical. It received bipartisan support because there was always an understanding that there would be opportunities for reasonable refinements. When the opportunity came to put this theory to the test, it unfortunately failed. As I mentioned in the previous meeting, Montgomery County got it right when presented with the same opportunity. Bringing it full circle, every rose has its thorn. Yes, I am quoting that song from the 80s. My fellow neighbors and I came to the county council regarding concerns about these thorns. Those concerns were not met with counterpoints, but assertions about the beauty of a rose's petals with less than tepid acknowledgement of the thorns. This is where we are with the Nixon property issue, Spencer Glenn. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nimhard. Ms. Patel.
Hi. My speech is not as good. Um, my speech is... I'm Jigna Patel from, live in the Sun Valley area. I'm here to talk about Nixon property. What I wanted to talk about today particularly was the ACDS requirements for building workforce housing, and they have a workforce housing development agreement that developers have to follow. And Milton Horn, the developer of this project, who spent two minutes reading off his resume here back in September, signed an agreement back in May before they even submitted their subdivision application, where he agreed to follow the ACDS rules. Yet, when he submitted his application, the rules say that... There's some rules that he didn't follow, and I uploaded that onto the written testimony. The workforce housing agreement says that the workforce housing units need to be evenly distributed throughout the project when feasible, very feasible in this development. It also says that the workforce housing units need to be architecturally similar in size as the market rate units. However, when we had access to those initial subdivision plans, it was very clear, before I even knew what the ACDS rules was, you could look at the plan and see, oh, look, those are the workforce houses. They're all clustered together in the least desirable lots, and very much not similar. You could look and visually see that they were smaller. So I thought the county, in the second, you know, in the resubmission of the application, would address it. And here we are. We get those documents. It's exactly the same, except the county knew. He was very transparent that he was not going to follow these rules from that initial subdivision. He told the county which lots were going to be the workforce unit houses, yet we're not enforcing our own agreements. And I want to know why this developer is not being held accountable to the county's own workforce housing program. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jane Beard. I live in Churchton, Maryland. I am here to talk about why the county should buy Discovery Village. There is no community center in South County. We're the only area in the county that has nothing like that. This is a solid building. It's an area that is well-used by the community. There are... When I look at the South County Arts Council Committee, there's... This building is... There's not enough space for the artists to show or make their work. There's not meeting space, especially as we look at the reports that come on Shoreline Resiliency. There's no place for us to meet in our communities to talk about how we want to react to this. There's no place for the citizens in South County. This is a solid building, and there is no right of first refusal in this lease. So if you don't snap it up, some developer like that guy could. It will be gone, and it will be... There will be no other... There is no other space like it. So please, I know budgets are tight. This is a matter of how we live and where we live. And I think it really, really deserves great consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council. My name's Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater. I'm here on behalf of the Growth Action Network. You might have seen in the paper last week that in the Anorondale County Community College survey of the county residents, 1,500 residents, 65% of survey respondents said they favor a planning commission. This county is one of only two that does not have a planning commission, and that disadvantages us as citizens and to hear from experts about land use matters before they're introduced. By the time they've hit the council, they're fairly well-cooked. 95 days is not enough time for citizen advocates to learn about what these things are and to come and testify and influence what's going on at the council. A planning commission would provide an additional time period in which the legislation is reviewed, considered by experts in land use and environment and development, and then public opinion is heard. The planning commission would issue an expert opinion to the county council along with the... When the legislation is introduced. This planning commission would take no authority from the council, okay? It's advisory-only. It's daylight, it's sunlight into the closed corners of the way our county government operates. And so I'm here making an appeal with the hopes that the county council will consider this. I've spoken with most of you about that, looking forward to another conversation on this topic this week. So thank you for your time on this. As we envisioned it, this planning commission would perform an independent, transparent, professional analysis of the fiscal, environmental, and quality-of-life impacts of proposed land use legislation. You'll hear more from us on that in the future, and we're looking forward to something that may come forward soon. I'll just say, in closing, this would be a great hybrid meeting if we had it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minahan. Thank you all. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So move.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the Legislative Session of October 20 and the closed meeting session of October 31, 2025.
Before I start, Ms. Pickard, you had your light on. Did you need... I'm sorry. Okay. Just wanted to make sure before we started. Okay. The minutes of October 20. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:04 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland. The minutes for the closed session on October 31. A closed meeting was held on October 31, 2025, in accordance with Section 3, 305B1 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland to discuss a personnel matter. Chair Hummer opened the meeting at 2:05 PM and was held in Room 143 of the Orundale Center in Annapolis, Maryland.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Legislative Session of October 20 and the closed meeting minutes of October 31, 2025?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the Legislative Session of October 20 and the closed meeting minutes of October 31, 2025 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 8825, An Ordnance Concerning Capital Budget and Program, Board of Education, All-Day Kindergarten and Pre-Kindergarten, Maintenance Backlog, Building Systems Renovations, Additions and Sustainability Initiative, Capital Projects, Supplementary and Transfer of Appropriations. Bill Number 8925, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations, Video Lottery Impact Fund, South River Heights Special Community Benefit District, Capital Budget and Program, Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 3325, Resolution Approving the Determination as Surplus in the Terms of a Private Disposition of Certain County-Owned Property on Dorsey Road in Glenn Burney, Maryland. Resolution Number 3425, Resolution Approving the Use of Funds from Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project for the Purchase of Real Properties in Edgewater, Maryland from Glee Bay LLP and Artabella Fox and in Harmonds, Maryland from Craig A. Mercer.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8325.
Bill Number 8325, An Ordnance Concerning the Authorization of the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery by Anorondale County, Maryland, the County, From Time to Time of Special Taxing District Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $12,360,000 to be Secured by Special Taxes to Refund All or A Portion of the County's Special Obligation Bonds on Orundale Gateway Project Series 2014 taxable and the Determination of Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issuance, Sale, and Payment of Such Bonds.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney, Billy Penley, our Controller, David Gregory, our Bond Counsel for McKenna, Shelton, and Hen, and Chris Sheehan, the Managing Director for Public Finance at Mizuro Finance. Bill 8325 was discussed at the work session a couple weeks ago, but this authorizes the issuance, sale, and delivery of refunding bonds and sets forth the requirements and conditions related to the refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed $12,360,002 to refund the Orundale Gateway Special Taxing District Bonds. We're happy to answer any questions.
We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 8325. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 8325? Seeing no movement. Public hearing on Bill Number 8325 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8325.
Bill Number 8325, An Ordnance Concerning the Authorization of the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery by Anorondale County, Maryland, the County, From Time to Time of Special Taxing District Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $12,360,000 to be Secured by Special Taxes to Refund All or A Portion of the County's Special Obligation Bonds on Orundale Gateway Project Series 2014 taxable and the Determination of Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issuance, Sale, and Payment of Such Bonds.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Vol.
Thank you. Not discussion, just a comment. And I appreciate the colloquy last meeting and the explanation on how this works, and so with the understanding that this is ultimately, hopefully, going to result in lower rates for some of these folks and savings of money for taxpayers. I'm very excited to support this. So I just want to put that on the record, because if it goes the other way, I want to be clear why I voted for it. All right.
All right. Any other comments, discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8325.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 8325 has passed.
Thank you all for coming out and sitting here quietly for a few minutes. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8625.
Bill Number 8625, An Emergency Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Employer Relations, Police Captains.
Ms. Pickard, you are the lead sponsor on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues. I think we have a 7-0 sponsorship on this bill. For the public and those watching at home, this bill will allow police captains to engage in collective bargaining with the county in the same manner as our other public safety employees, including joining with the current police service bargaining unit. This bill also extends the timeframe for certification of a bargaining unit from October to October, November, and December. I think we've got the votes on this, but happy to hear from the administration and anyone in the public.
Yes. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Ann Bedowsky, our Personnel Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. We are comfortable with this legislation. I will just note that we did have some initial concerns about extending the certification timeline to the end of December, but understanding the necessity of doing that for this particular legislation, we're comfortable with that, and we'll probably address that timeline at a future date.
All right. So is there any discussion? So we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 8625. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 8625? Please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Go right ahead. Gentlemen?
Good evening. I'm Mike Shire from the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 70. We're all back here on standard time, and, you know, I know how miserable that is, but... Congress? Oh, so the county council? Oh, I don't think they're doing anything with that. All right. So maybe this bill. No, we just want to thank the county council for their work and the time they've spent on this issue to understand the issue, and we're obviously here in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shire.
Good evening. I'm John Poole. I'm here representing the captains for the Anorondale County Police Department. I'm also an active member of our Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 70. I'd like to thank the entire county council for their support and co-sponship of the Bill 8625. As you know, police captains are currently the only unrepresented, non-appointed sworn officers in our police department. We appreciate your support and the administration's support, allowing us to collectively bargain with the county to ensure consistent and progressive set of benefits that will attract the best candidates for promotion to lead our police department today and also into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Atkinson?
Oh, good. Good evening. O'Brien Atkinson, I'm the President of our local Fraternal Order of Police. Next year will mark the 50th year anniversary of our captains being removed from collective bargaining. I think that it's recently the... Or I guess after that, they removed lieutenants, they removed sergeants, and over the years, sergeants and lieutenants were able to regain their ability to bargain collectively. I think that this council and this administration recognizes that collective bargaining is not a bad thing, that unrepresented employee... Or I guess merit employees should be represented. And I think it's worked out terrific. We've had great relationships over the years. We've been able to negotiate and resolve a lot of issues as collective bargaining will allow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. So the public hearing on Bill Number 8625 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8625.
Bill Number 8625, An Emergency Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Employer Relations, Police Captains.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8625.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 8625 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7625.
Bill Number 7625, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Sidewalks, Removal of Snow and Ice.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table, Karen Henry, our Director of the Department of Public Works, Alex Baki, our Deputy Director of the Bureau of Highways, Holly Velez, our Chief of Licensing for Inspections and Permits, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. This bill has been discussed at several prior council meetings. It would allow the county to enforce some new provisions regarding removal of snow and ice from sidewalks. As we mentioned previously, we got quite a number of complaints in the last winter, and this would transfer the enforcement responsibility from police department to the Department of Inspections and Permits, and as amended, set a fine of $50 or $125 for someone failing to comply with these provisions of the code, and it would be entirely complaint-driven. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Is there any discussion? No one? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7625 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 7625? Okay. Come on up. Please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council. I'm Maureen Carr York. I'm the President of the Greater Severna Park Council. My number... My address for the record is 105 Sandgate Court, Millersville, Maryland. And I've been a resident of the Severna Park. It's technically Millersville. Millersville, Severna Park, and Arnold area since 1988. I am here with concerns about this bill because our community has concerns about this bill. My house has no sidewalk in front of it. It's not my personal problem. But other folks are very concerned. They're concerned about their health. You don't have to be 70 years old, although we do break more readily, to be concerned about shoveling snow, trying to clear ice, that sort of thing. And we have a tremendous amount of people who have mentioned in calls to us in our meetings, our general meetings of the Greater Severna Park Council, that they are deeply concerned about this. They're also concerned about the fines being rather large. The amendments to this bill are key. Some of the amendments are what keep people from coming in here, a lot of them, to address this bill because they at least figure they can manage things that way. I would like to point out a couple of things. Number one, not all of the county is the same. We have, you know, places like Annapolis and some of our more congested areas, Glenn Burney, even like downtown, if you will, Severna Park, where people do walk on sidewalks even when there's been bad weather and where there can be concern about getting those cleaned. But for the rest of us, we're in cul-de-sacs and on quiet lanes that people, if it snows, stay in. Or, one last word, as the officials always tell us, stay in or they will... They will get something done to try and clear up. Our streets don't get cleared as fast as you want our sidewalks.
Yes. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Doug Nichols. I'm Vice President of the Greater Severna Park Council. I'm also a resident of Anorondale County and a voter since 1966. I grew up in Severna Park. We like to refer to it as a suburban community area. It's certainly a mature area. If I moved there in 1955, and it's still there. I live elsewhere now in Severna Park. In reading over the bill as amended, I... My problem with it really is, in the Severna Park area, we like to consider ourselves neighbors and friends, and it strikes me that if we're going to enforce sidewalks having been without snow or ice, especially in the deeper snowstorms, and we're going to rely on our neighbors to tell on us, to complain, it's just... It's... There's something wrong with that. And where before, if a police officer had the responsibility for enforcing it, it was something he could do on-site. He didn't have to have somebody call and complain. Going to licenses and permits, I don't think they have the same ability to issue any citations from just sight. I think they can only act on somebody's complaint. So my fear is you're going to turn this area into something where people don't like their neighbors or get even with their neighbors. And I would hope that you'd be able to... I'd hope you'd be able to fix it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. The public hearing on Bill Number 7625 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7625 as amended.
Bill Number 7625, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Sidewalks, Removal of Snow and Ice.
Okay. There are three amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 10.
Amendment Number 10. This amendment adds a definition of fronting.
Okay. Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment came out of questions I had with DPW to clarify what frontage was, and it's not specifically defined in the code. So this defines it so that if an inspector does go out, there is no question on what frontage is. And if you remember, I had a bill way back when, earlier this year, that changed the definition of front yard so that they were actually front yards. So there is a reason why I am introducing it. So it's abundantly clear that this applies to the front and the side if you were on a corner lot and not the rear of a property. And with that, I move the amendment forward.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're comfortable with this amendment and talking with the department. That's how they would enforce it, so.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? No one? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 10.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 10 has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 11.
Amendment Number 11. This amendment restores the provision making the expense of snow or ice by the Department of Public Works the responsibility of the abutting property owner.
Okay. Mr. Hunt, this is administration amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this does restore some language that was struck by amendment previously. We do feel that it's important that the cost be absorbed by property owners
We do feel that it's important that the cost be absorbed by property owners if DPW is forced to send out a crew or contractors to remove snow and not be borne by the county taxpayers in looking, you know, at snow and ice events. If DPW would have to go out and remove them and absorb the cost, it's sort of an unknown cost.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just so that we're understanding, the amendment that I introduced that passed that removed the requirement for the county to bill back someone whose sidewalk was cleared by the county, this undoes that passed amendment?
Correct.
Okay, I just want, for the record, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, Ms. Pickard?
Nope, just ready to vote.
Oh, okay, all right, no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 11.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nope.
Ms. Fiedler.
No.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Amendment Number 11 has been adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 12.
Amendment Number 12, this amendment removes the provision of, for the Department of Public Works to arrange for the removal of snow from sidewalks when in violation of the provisions of the section.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we would like to ask that Amendment 12 be withdrawn.
Okay, Amendment Number 12 is withdrawn. Do you really? Give him five minutes. I guess, you gotta make a motion, I guess.
Make a motion to recess for three minutes to allow our staff to get another amendment together.
Second.
Madam Sec, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion to recess for five minutes has passed.
We are back to order. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 13.
Amendment Number 13, this amendment requires the removal of snow and ice from a sidewalk within 24 hours for accumulations less than three inches, or 48 hours for accumulations of three inches or greater.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, well, it does what it says, so I'll move the amendment.
Okay.
Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Can you please add me as a co-sponsor to this amendment?
Yes, Ms. Fiedler, thank you.
Ledbetter, second.
Okay, administration? Y'all okay with this?
Have no objection to this amendment.
Okay, all right, is there any further discussion on this, Ms. Fiedler?
Not at this moment, but once we vote on this, I do have a follow-up question.
Okay, Ms. Rodvian?
I don't want to be the wet blanket or snowy blanket, as it might be. Icy, the icy blanket. I'm concerned about measurements, what do you have in mind?
Generally a ruler, but that's just.
Okay, but is this going to be a county-wide or by, because, you know, sometimes, I don't know, different parts of the county, it could be six inches and down in Nap Town, it's two.
Yeah, I would say wherever they're enforcing it, it would make sense to say that's the place where you're taking that measurement.
And then sometimes the snow packs a little bit over.
You know?
Okay.
These things can happen.
Okay, so you, you think it's where it's not, it's not, like, I'm overly unnecessarily concerned about measuring?
I would not say that, I would not discount your concerns that way, I would just say I think they're going to be able to find a way to enforce it. I think the intention of this is, if we get a really big snow, you get more time, right? That's the idea.
Yeah.
And I think if we're fighting over three versus four inches on a snowfall, we might have bigger things we should be asking ourselves questions about than that. The purpose with this really is if we get a two-foot snow, we're not going out telling people they have to have their sidewalks cleared within 24 hours, which is egregious, so.
We should do what one of our folks said and just stay in.
That's right, if we get two-foot snow, please just stay in your house, so, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would just add that the amendment that you introduced and we passed does also give the flexibility for someone going out to say, oh my, it's like you're a quarter of an inch off, I'm going to waive it.
Right, all right, no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll for Bill, for Amendment Number 13, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, if this happened already, did Admin weigh in on this amendment?
Yes.
Yes, we're, we're fine with it.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
No problem, it's, please call the roll on Amendment Number 13.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 13 has been adopted.
All right.
Madam.
Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
With the removal of Amendment 12, or the withdrawing, was that amendment? We, Admin withdrew, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
That amendment would have removed the provision that DPW has to remove snow from sidewalks that are DPW or government sidewalks, or, no?
No, so that would have removed the requirement that DPW has to remove, or would remove snow from sidewalks in front of properties that aren't county-owned.
Got it, okay, thank you.
All right, Bill number 7625 as amended will be heard on November 17th, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7925 as amended.
Bill number 7925, an ordinance concerning construction and property maintenance codes, civil fines, international property maintenance codes, codes and supplement air conditioning in multiple dwellings.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration, with me I have Don Curtian, our Director of Environmental Health from the Department of Health, and Laurie Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. This bill was also discussed at the work session a couple of weeks ago, but it allows the county to enforce provisions of the building code regarding air conditioning and require that those multifamily dwelling units that do offer air conditioning have to maintain their air conditioning in good working order and sets the parameters for the range of temperatures that are acceptable. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number 7925 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill number 7925? Seeing no movement, public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7925 as amended.
Bill number 7925, an ordinance concerning construction and property maintenance codes, civil fines, international property maintenance codes, codes and supplement air conditioning in multiple dwellings.
All right, any further discussion, Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll just take this opportunity to explain my vote for a moment. I'm going to support this legislation and I want to say that the reasons for it are a couple that I think are important. One, the Maryland Multi-Housing Association has come out and they have no problem with this bill, which I think is really important because they represent a significant number of, what I will say, are the professional sort of top-tier operators who are doing a good job in multifamily housing. So to me, that gives me a significant amount of comfort to know that the people whose job is to represent those folks are saying this is okay. Additionally, I'm even more okay with it because of the amendments that we've made, which I think really creates some avenues to ensure that before the department steps in and takes action to do anything, to kind of force or take a governmental action, there has to be a determination that the operator is not sort of coming up to snuff, if you will, even after being given opportunities to correct, and so I appreciate that as well. So for those reasons, knowing that the people most affected are okay with it and are saying they're fine with it, and then on top of it, some of the edits we've made, I'm happy to support this bill. So I thank you both for working with us, I want to thank the department, Mr. Curtian, for coming out and, you know, being able to craft something that we all can get together with, so appreciate that.
Any other comments? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 7925 as amended.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill number 7925 as amended has passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8425.
Bill number 8425, an ordinance concerning planning and development, master plan for water supply and sewerage systems.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration, joining me at the table are Laurie Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, Desiree Williams, a senior planner from the Office of Planning and Zoning, Chris Murphy, our utility engineer from the Department of Public Works, and David Braun, our engineer, no, Chris Biggerstaff, sorry, I couldn't see down at the end of the table there, our senior engineer from the Department of Public Works. Bill 8425 was also discussed at the work session a couple of weeks ago, but it proposes text and map amendments to the 2022 master plan for water and sewerage systems in order to provide public water and sewer to county-owned Joint 911 Public Safety Center, public water for the county-owned Police Special Operations Building, and acknowledge the transfer of existing service from the state to the county for the Crownsville Memorial Park area. An evaluation was conducted for sewer management options for Crownsville. Several alternatives were reviewed and the recommendation was to transition to sewage pumping station and associated force main as the existing plant requires extensive upgrades to the existing systems and extensive operational costs. Additionally, the sewage pump station and force main are a better environmental solution for Crownsville when compared to the current spray irrigation plant that essentially sprays treated wastewater onto large open fields. The new pump station and force main is sending flow to the normal county system to be treated more effectively at one of the county's wastewater plants. The areas surrounding Crownsville are in the rural sewer service area and rural and agricultural development policy areas. The intent with this amendment is to serve only the Crownsville Memorial Park area identified in the exhibit and the Joint 911 Public Safety Center. To achieve this, the Joint, the Crownsville Memorial Park and Joint 911 Center will be served by a restricted access eight-inch force main, and the Joint 911 Center will be served by a restricted eight-inch access water main. Happy to answer any questions, I know the experts next to me can answer any questions much better than I can.
Any discussion? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number 8425. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill number 8425? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill number 8425 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8425.
Bill number 8425, an ordinance concerning planning and development, master plan for water supply and sewerage systems.
Any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 8425.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill number 8425 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8525.
Bill number 8525, an ordinance concerning purchasing, county governments transition to zero emissions leaf blowers leading by example.
Ms. Rodvian, this is your bill.
Thank you, so really, this is just codifying an action that the county executive's office took, or I should say the county executive took after the bill that I brought last fall that would have asked the county residents to switch from gas-powered leaf blowers to electric, was not successful, but this was, in my humble opinion, a silver lining that the county was willing to make the switch, and this just puts it in the county code after the executive order. So basically, it's codifying something that the county is already doing.
Okay, is there any?
And I asked for my colleague's support, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me I have Susan Harrell, our Director of Central Services, and Laurie Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. As the sponsor said, this codifies an existing executive order, we support it and are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, is there any discussion, Mr. Smith?
I do have one question, it was mentioned earlier that, so the county already has all-electric fleet when it comes to their, their blowers currently? Or this is going to be phased in over this five-year period to have those in place?
Good evening, Susan Harrell, Central Services Officer, this is a phased-in approach, and so through attrition, Central Services, right.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Volkey?
Hello, thank you. I asked this question when Mr. Trumbauer was here. What is the cost, I mean, I see all these estimates in the fiscal note, and I see you all estimating this. How much more is this going to cost than using gas-powered leaf blowers? And people have suggested that we have oil and gas costs, and so somehow by replacing those with these more expensive battery-operated models, we're going to come out to a net zero. I have a hard time following that, the math that I think I did with Mr. Trumbauer was somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000 to $300,000 more is what it's going to cost. Is that accurate?
I believe that's, Central Services, Rec and Parks, and DPW have estimated that that's going to be about what it's going to, so that the savings in the gas and the oil will be replaced with batteries and battery storage. So we believe it's very close to it.
So we think that the net effect of gas and oil is equal to buying these new batteries?
That's what the estimates show, yes.
Okay, have you polled the people who do this work in the departments, whether it be Rec and Parks or Central Services, to see whether they have a preference on using gas versus electric-powered blowers?
I personally did not poll.
Has anyone?
That, I could not speak to that.
Has anyone who's pushing this forward used both a gas-powered and an electric leaf blower?
I have not, I'm not aware that we have polled county employees.
Okay, okay, have you ever tried to like clear leaves with a gas-powered versus an electric-powered leaf blower? I have, that's why I'm asking, I'm just curious what other people's experiences are. I have an electric leaf blower, I use it to blow out my garage, I would never use that in my backyard. It'll last for about 10, 15 minutes, and then it's gone. To be able to clear any significant areas, you need more power than that, you really do. And that's, I mean, mine's a four-hour, I've got multiple batteries, and they run through pretty quick. So, I'm just not sure how feasible this is going to be, like, do we think about that from a standpoint of where the administration is when you are supportive of this bill or you're passing these executive orders, like, what's the thought process on that?
I think.
And I am asking you to speak for the county executive.
I understand.
Because clearly, he did the executive order.
Correct, he did do the executive order about a year ago, requiring that, over the course of the next five years, as the, as the current inventory of gas and, gas-powered leaf blowers, as they, you know, break down, that we replace them with electric leaf blowers. And I think the thought process was that they are a more environmentally-friendly alternative. I know there have been discussions about the health benefits of operating an electric leaf blower as opposed to a gas-powered leaf blower, so I believe that was the thought process.
I got it, but set aside that for a second, are they effective?
Madam Chair?
That's a question.
Just since this is my bill, I was wondering if I could chime in here.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair, that's a fair.
Yes, Ms. Rodvian?
So I have used both, and first off, it's important to remember that just because it's an electric leaf blower doesn't mean it's battery-powered. So there, you can also have plug-in, and there are a lot of situations where the county might be able to use plug-in if you're, if you were doing, blowing leaves close to a building. I will tell you that electric leaf blower that I have has such strong torque, if I turn it up too high, it will start to pull me over. So I have never had any, I've never had any issues with getting sufficient power out of the electric leaf blower, and that's just, you know, a commercial, residential, it's not any sort of industrial use. I would say battery technology is probably gone, come a little bit further, since, I don't know how long you've had yours, but battery technology has evolved pretty quickly.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Do you mind coming back to me, I had something and my screen froze.
Sure, Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What do we spend annually on gas and maintenance of our existing fleet?
I don't have, I don't have that information on the gas.
Okay, the $250,000, that's just the replacement cost, correct?
For the equipment.
For the equipment.
For the equipment.
I would assume, so total, we have 124 units, 115 of those are backpack. Have we replaced any of those units to date?
I'm not sure about the other two departments, FMD's not replaced anything yet.
Okay, have we identified what units we are going to replace those with and what the wattage is on the batteries?
So, the ideal scenario would be the departments would replace them through attrition as they break down, or that they come to the end of their useful life, they would replace. The county has several vendors that we use, and the batteries can go up to 60 volt from the list of our vendors. So we have the opportunity, there's several models that the departments can purchase through the small procurement process. We have contracts with several vendors.
Are you anticipating, for, understanding this is just your department, two batteries per unit, how many are we calculating battery-wise we'll need to sustain that one unit?
I think it's going to depend on.
Are you anticipating, for understanding this is just your department, two batteries per unit? How many are we calculating battery-wise we'll need to sustain that one unit?
I think it's going to depend on what the function is. So my horticulture department is very small, and so we may have two or three batteries per unit, based on the time of the year and what they're doing. There's also battery storage. They have to have special compartments that they have to be, they can't be in a hot vehicle, and so we'll purchase those as well. So I would imagine this is probably unknown until we get really into it, but the immediate... And I think as we do this through a phased-in approach, we'll have more information as we go.
What is the current charge that kilowatt per hour that the county has charged for electricity? And I'm just asking these questions because in the fiscal note, it says that there will be minimal increase in electricity costs, but those cannot be estimated at this time. It just sounds like we have absolutely no support to make the statement that there will be a minimal increase.
I think when you're looking at the overall electricity supply that the county absorbs through all its different facilities, the cost for charging these pieces of equipment would be pretty minimal.
Compared to the electricity that the county uses as a whole?
Correct.
Well, certainly, but it is going to... That doesn't mean that it's going to go up minimally in general. It could be $30,000, it could be $150,000, depending on the battery, the number of batteries and the wattage per kilowatt charge.
I'm not sure that that would be the case.
That's how electricity charge works.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I use electrical on equipment, and I have not seen my electric bill go up at all, so.
Do you have 124 units that you're charging at your home?
I've got 118. Did you get 124?
Did I do the math wrong?
I don't know. No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
So I'm actually glad you all are taking this approach. One, as a industry, I wouldn't want the public to be burdened with this newness of this as it evolves, and I think Ms. Rodvian mentioned something earlier that was key. Battery technology is evolving at a very, very rapid place. Interesting part of my comments later this evening on a resolution that I have about power consumption, we've been doing a lot of work and studying on that, but I'll get into that once we get to that resolution. But the fact that we'll have five years to integrate and determine whether or not this is an achievable objective, I think that certainly gives me comfort. If this was going to be implemented in the next, like, six months, I would probably be voting no today, but since there is five years of data to be collected leading up to that as you phase this in, the county will certainly see the benefits or the data that's collected from that to make those determinations on how super-effective this is going to be. The power consumption, usually, when it comes to vehicles versus battery-charged vehicles, there are some savings that we... The car industry has shown that there are some savings with some aspects. So obviously, will this be some savings potentially, depending on how widespread we utilize this within the county? I'm just glad it's just the county government that's sort of testing going into this sort of new era and not necessarily the public, so we can lead by example and say, yes, this worked. Or quite frankly, in the next four or five years, we'll be like, yeah, this is a total failure. We need to eliminate this requirement. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Are we going to charge the batteries in a zero-emission way? Can anybody answer that? Of course, they can't guarantee that, because it's impossible, because you're literally charging these batteries on power plants that are fueled by fossil fuels, because that's the only way to keep the grid operating. I mean, this is just virtue signaling at the highest level.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I feel like I'm not having any opportunity to, you know, give some context to my own bill. Everything is being directed, and I appreciate the county executives' help, but, well, it is my bill. Even Anarundel County and the state of Maryland as a whole have made huge strides moving away or moving towards renewable energy. So we are not, you know, strictly working only on the coal-powered plants, and over time, the state of Maryland has plans to continue. There's a whole, I don't know if you've seen this, but recently, the state of Maryland just created, put out a whole new pot of money for people to convert to, you know, to add solar panels to their homes. So this is, you know, that is another type of thing. We have a solar farm coming online in Glenburnie that, you know, will power a lot of what the county government does. So it's not strictly, you know, just what's coming from the coal-powered plants. Also, in addition to the environmental benefits, there's some pretty significant health benefits. You know, the fumes that come from the mixture of the gas and the oil is, you know, one of the first things that you breathe if you're operating these, and yes, a lot of people wear masks, but not everyone does. The heavy vibrations and the sound obviously can cause hearing loss, and even if you're wearing, even if you're wearing, you know, ear protection, the vibrations actually have been shown statistically to increase depression, add to sleep loss, and increase heart conditions. So there's a number of reasons to do this beyond just the environmental reasons, which, you know, I think that was the first, that was the first thing that attracted me to this, but this is also not new. We're not the first jurisdiction to do something like this. There are jurisdictions all over the country that have made this switch and, you know, are doing just fine, are not, you know, unable to manage their leaves after having made the switch.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate my colleague introducing this legislation. I know that when the previous bill was before the council that was aimed at landscapers and private property owners, what we heard was that the government should take the first initiative. So I can appreciate that that is what this bill is doing. My concern is that the county executive has taken the initiative to do the executive order, but now that we are codifying it, we won't have the opportunity to see how it plays out and adjusts or pull back. It is very difficult to pull back legislation once you introduce and pass it. So my concern is that we will get two, three years in to this, and electricity rates may skyrocket. We have no idea what's going to happen with rates as we face energy demand that cannot keep up with what's available out there, is we're codifying something that we have no idea what the fiscal impact is going to be at all, and that's where I am right now.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate your patience before. I was having loading problems on my computer. One of my biggest concerns, and it ties into a little bit of what Ms. Fiedler was saying, it's the idea of codifying it. One of the advantages, the fact that it's an executive order, is if there's a bump in the road, if we realize that possibly the battery-powered leaf blowers are not a good fit for every situation that the county has to encounter, it's a little bit easier to adjust that than if we have to work with legislation. And one of my concerns is particular, in many parts of, you know, many parts of my district are rural, and blowers are used to clear drainage pipes. We have a lot of flooding issues when it rains, when the pipes are clogged, there's a lot of calls to come down and get those blown out. And if you do a Google search, and you can find that the CFM rating, which is how much air is expelled from a blower per minute, an electric blower has a CFM rating of anywhere between 180 and 400 versus a gas-powered is from 400 all the way up to 700. And depending upon what you're blowing, you need more air per minute. Wet leaves stuck in a drainage pipe could very well need more air per minute than what an electric blower is capable of doing. If it's codified, it's very hard to learn that lesson and roll that legislation back. An executive order, when we get there, maybe we can learn that we need to adjust. Maybe the technology will catch up and it'll all be fine, but there's more flexibility with where we are versus passing a bill, although I do definitely appreciate the intent. But that is one of my biggest concerns.
Ms. Pickard.
Do we, from the administration's standpoint, have a sense of the kind of maintenance that our different departments that are already using gas-powered leaf blowers are enduring every... I mean, making sure the sidewalk is clear with some street trees in front of a certain building is one thing, an electric leaf blower would be fine, but as my colleague is talking about whether Wreckin' Parks is, or IMP is doing a heavier kind of workload with a leaf blower, is that something where... Does this bill, as drafted, allow that sort of nuance to be taken into effect?
I'm not sure that it does, and I don't have any answer for the type of varying degrees of intensity that different departments are utilizing leaf blowers for. I would imagine with Wreckin' Parks, it's probably removing leaves from fields.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Because it does seem like, we don't have a ton of information about it, but we may have to, we may have to, we may have to come back if this bill passes, we may have to come back and revisit this in a, from the code perspective to see, you know, there's the right tool for the right job, right? So figuring that out from an efficiency standpoint is going to be important to our county workforce and maintaining county property. I'm comfortable with the bill as drafted. It's a five-year runway, so I'm comfortable with that, but it may be something we have to revisit based on, you know, the grid conditions we already are suffering, plus just understanding, better understanding the role of the right tool for the job.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. So I guess I don't know for certain how the county is using their leaf blowers, but they're not really designed to, you know, clear wet leaves from a drain. That's not what the tools are designed for. So if they're using them in that way, you know, that is, whether it's a gas-powered leaf blower or an electric-powered leaf blower, that is going beyond what the tool is designed for. And I'm hoping that in general, our county departments are not using tools for things that they're not... I know people on their private property will use a leaf blower to blow snow. Again, that's not what they're designed for, so, you know, we have to be realistic about what, you know, what tasks we're undertaking. To my colleague's point about the electricity, yes, we could have spikes in electric rates, but we can also have dramatic increases in the costs of gas and oil fuel. I think we are much more likely to see decreases in electric rates because of the push to bring more renewable energy to our state. And so, you know, the more we have, in fact, I believe you are investigating a topic on that, which I think is really wonderful. So I think we're actually more likely to see costs coming down with electric than we are with gas and oil. Of course, no one can predict the future for either, because there are obviously many factors that will determine, you know, who would have thought that we would be moving towards renewable energies, but then we, you know, have policies in place that are trying to roll back renewable energy. So it's, you know, there's no certainty, but I think the odds are in the favor of electricity prices coming down in terms of, in terms of what we're generating.
Mr. Volkey.
Will contractors who do business for the county be required to abide by these same requirements?
That is not covered under the legislation. This is for the county workforce only.
And the state, to the extent that the state is performing maintenance work in the county, will this have any impact on state workers and their requirement to use zero-emission leaf blowers, i.e. non-gas?
It's not my understanding that it does. This is just for the county equipment, county-owned equipment.
Got it. Okay.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 8525. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 8525? We do have some people coming forward. Please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Sir, you can go ahead.
Okay. My name's John Taylor. I live 768 Breswood Court in Millersville, Maryland. I just have a few brief comments on what I heard. It's a $380,000 investment to replace an $86,000 investment. So that's a net cost of $300,000 over, let's call it four years, because it's not going to be five years. So that's a lot of money. Secondly, I don't know if they're factoring in spare batteries. If you get 20 minutes of runtime for a battery and you're on a job working eight hours, you might have to have 10 batteries on hand to complete the job. So I'm not sure, getting back to the point originally, is it feasible to replace a gas-powered machine that can run for 24 hours with one that can only run 20 minutes at a time, get the charger, get the battery, you know? So I don't have a dog in the fight. I'm not a commercial landscaper or anything. I'm just listening, you know, basically common sense. Some machines are purpose-built for heavy-duty work, and some are light duty. Generally, electrical, electric appliances are more light duty. I'm not sure. I did hear the original feedback from the commercial landscapers, and they were against this completely. They did not think it was practical or feasible. Now, to your point about safe, health and safety, I personally use electric and gas. They're just two different duties. The noise, you know, they're like murder hornets. It's, I sit on my deck, and I'm just surrounded by these buzzing, screaming machines for two to three hours a day, it seems like. And so I don't personally like them, but I think that it comes down to efficiency. What's the impact, you know, if our county workers are out doing a job and their battery dies, do they just stop working? So that's my response, and it was just feedback from what I've heard. I did actually come here. I read the bill, and I was interested, because the numbers, if I can just have two more seconds here.
No, I'm sorry, sir. Thank you. You're done. Ms. Carayork.
I appreciate you hearing me on this. I did read Consumer Reports this month. It's a fairly well-regarded magazine. They had, as one of their particular articles, the various factors involved in electric and battery-operated leaf blowers. And they mentioned that the lightweight, easy-to-use ones have a battery time of about 10 minutes, maximum 15 minutes with the very best. The backpack-mounted big ones can go for an hour, and then they're done. So that's just, want to share that. That's something you can verify by looking at the magazine yourself, and that's, a lot of research went into that. The other thing I noticed, my particular landscaper was here prior on the other bill just saying, "More time, let us phase it in," and he, to his word, phased it in, and he's got, I think, all-electric now. So they're out there the other day with the backpack, big battery type, and they had to stop, and I sort of went out. I didn't know what this one piece of machinery they were wheeling onto my yard was, and it was the batteries, because, you know, I asked him, "What's this thing?" And he said, "Hmm, batteries." So, you know, that's a reality to the professionals. Either they carry this heavy, you know, thing full of batteries that they swap out as they need to, or they have to, you know, basically get up and leave the site and come back when they have a full battery pack. So that's a reality of how those are working. I don't know how different the commercial ones might be across the board. I just know that's what Mike Marshall-Dy does, and he loves environmental issues. He's 100% in favor of doing everything he can, but this is just what's happened. So, great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, all right. The public hearing on Bill Number 8525 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8525.
Bill Number 8525, In Ordnance Concerning Purchasing: County Governments Transition to Zero-Emissions Leaf Blowers Leading By Example.
Mr. Volkey.
Is the school system doing this, too? I'm not aware whether or not the school system is doing it. I don't believe so.
How about the county college? Are they doing it?
Yeah, yeah.
Again, this is... Again, this is, I'd like to be able to chime in.
Sure.
I would request that you ask the school system directly on that question.
Okay. Is the school system doing this? Yep. I knew he was here before I asked the question.
For the record, Kyle Roof, Executive Director of Facilities for Anaronda County Public Schools. We're doing a slow transition at buildings where the custodial teams are moving towards electric, and that's for smaller time usage. As far as our grounds crew, they're still using gas-powered equipment.
Similar to this concept of right tool, right job. All right. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8525.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr., or excuse me, Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 8525 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3125.
Resolution Number 3125. Resolution supporting the Anaronda County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2027 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program request for submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction.
And we've already got you there. We were efficient there. So, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Kyle Roof, the Executive Director of Facilities for Anaronda County Public Schools, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. Resolution 3125 confirms the county executive's support for the fiscal 2027 Capital Improvement Program request submitted by the Anaronda County Board of Education to the Interagency Commission on School Construction for funding under the state's Public School Construction Program. Under procedures set forth by the IAC, they require a written letter of support from the local governing body, which is the county executive and confirmed by the county council. And so I have Mr. Roof here who can answer any questions about the 2027 IAC request.
There any discussion, any questions? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 3125. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 3125? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Resolution Number 3125 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3125.
Resolution Number 3125, excuse me, Resolution Supporting the Anaronda County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2027 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program Request for Submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anyone? No, we don't have any questions for you, Mr. Roof. Sorry. Madam, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 3125.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3125 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3225.
Resolution Number 3225. Resolution urging the establishment of an adequate public facilities study group to address the need for an electrical grid impact review for new development.
Mr. Smith, this is your resolution.
Earlier, a few minutes ago, we spoke about the electric grid and power consumptions that we have as needs within the county. And so this resolution is simply an ask to the administration to put together a group of folks who can actually look at either decisions that are either self-imposed, legislatively imposed, as well as from a planning standpoint that impacts our ability to sustain ourselves from a power standpoint. If you look at Loudoun County or some of the counties in Northern Virginia here, if you don't know, that they are actually going through a significant amount of review because of decisions that have been made and that are impacted that county. And so, you know, I'm asking, over the last decade, Maryland has imported roughly 40% of its power into Anaronda County, into the state. And over the next decade, energy costs could increase primarily because of inverted impacts to most, which would impact most of our, our citizens here in Anaronda County. But those power increases occur for a number of different reasons. Energy costs could increase because of, there's a bidding war on power consumption here between the states and who's going to have access to that. We have data centers that are, that are cropping up, and I'm not, I'm supportive of those. But I think it's important that we look at what our needs are as a county to ensure that the decisions that we are making won't put us in a disadvantaged situation. So as these energy demands evolve due to the modernization of commercial and residential utilization, it is important that our county understand the needs that could potentially impact, impact our communities. So many residents in our county have seen firsthand the increases in household electric bills due to demands and regional auction impacts. And as a leader in this county, it's important that we take on this, this challenge. It's critical that we understand the exposure we are placing our communities and businesses in. So this resolution is simply just to gather a group of folks and for us to just look at our county, are we postured to be successful in the future when it comes to our energy needs so that we're making decisions, looking at that as a component as well, potentially. And that group just come back and say, "Hey, yo, we looked at it. You're good," or, "No, we should probably make some improvements here." And so that's essentially what this resolution is asking us to do before, you know, we become like other states who've had rolling blackouts. I don't think it's going to be that, it's that serious here, but I certainly don't want us to be behind the power curve if it does occur here in the future. And so would, would ask my colleagues to support the resolution simply to do that study and see where we are. Thank you.
Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. We're comfortable with this resolution. I think this is obviously a pertinent issue for lots of people. It's something that's on lots of people's, lots of folks' minds. There are, I mean, the county does not have any regulatory authority over, you know, energy, the grid or energy distribution is managed at the state and federal level. But we're certainly comfortable with getting a group together to look at how we're positioned to make sure that we are not, you know, suffering any adverse consequences from electricity supply.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Volkey?
I guess I'm just trying to understand how these fiscal notes get developed. This may provoke Mr. Trumbauer's ire when I ask this question, but when Ms. Fiedler did Resolution 2925 requesting the Department of Inspections and Permits to develop a forest conservation manual that we passed earlier this month, or actually last month, excuse me, the fiscal note said it was going to cost a couple hundred thousand dollars to do it. The fiscal note for this particular resolution says there's no cost whatsoever for the county to undertake this group of people getting together and doing this work, which if this is going to include county staff, which I think it will, I don't know how that's possible because this clearly is going to take their time and energy away from other things they're doing to be involved in this. So I'm just trying to understand, like, how these fiscal notes get developed because it seems a little bit odd to me that putting together a book is going to end up costing a couple hundred thousand dollars, but this is going to be zero.
So I, I think that question is probably better directed to the Budget Office because the Budget Office develops the fiscal notes. I do know.
They're not here, though.
They aren't, they aren't correct. And I, in conversations with our Budget Officer, I think the understanding, because of the language of the prior resolution, looking at a, producing a published document, I think was read a certain way, and, you know, certain costs were inferred from that language, whereas this is pretty open-ended in terms of...
It says, "Submit a report and recommendation by June 30th, 2025?" Be a typo because it's in the fiscal note. In the fiscal note, last line under summary of legislation.
Twenty-six.
We're going to miss that deadline, but, but there's a report and recommendation that has to come out. So there's some published result that's going to come out of this.
Correct.
But there's no fiscal note. There's no cost. I just don't understand. That's an open question to the Budget Office. I'm sure they'll get back to me.
Sure they will promptly.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is for the sponsor. When I see adequate public facilities, I automatically think of the APFO testing. This is not intended to be a measure, once the report and recommendation comes out, that has to be passed in order to do any type of development, whether it be school.
No, the only, Madam Chair, the only reason I use the APF because that's typically the adequate public facility group that evolved and looked at creating that was the, looked at how our infrastructure and our, was going to be able to sustain and support growth in the area. So it just seemed like a natural place for that group to review what's happening from a electrical standpoint in our accounting and how we're postured. So whatever outcome of that review, it's, it's, it's not, it could be no recommendations. It could be something that's eye-opening that we choose to put something in place, but it's not, it doesn't create anything regulatory once the report or the review is completed, if that makes any sense.
It does. And Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up question? Who do you envision would be part of this study group, and what do they look at?
I think, I think, you know, we had that conversation earlier, and we talked about probably some state officials as well that work with the, I think it's the PSC that does the regulatory, so maybe some team members from them to talk about what is the state doing from a power standpoint to, to impact the state. And we can infer from that how it's going to impact Anaronda County. I think some land use folks would probably potentially be a part of this as they look at how development is occurring as we go forward. A lot more houses are being more automated, right? And so a lot of the devices that we're using in today's household use are more technology, even our cars. Just about everyone has a electric car in their, their house now. And so those are putting more demands on the infrastructure. So the goal is to just look to see, well, are we in a good situation to sustain that growth that we're going towards when it comes to the, the power consumptions that we have? So that's, it's, those are at least a couple of the handful of folks that I think would be value-added to the discussion to help us as a county navigate that going forward.
One more follow-up question, and this might actually be for the Office of Law. I'm not really sure. What happens if this resolution passes and we can't find the folks to participate in this group to put together a report by the date? It's not, it's a non-binding resolution, so I would assume there's no penalty unless I'm wrong.
Sorry. Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. That's correct. There would be no penalty.
Maybe, but that's, that's the case with any resolution that we have and ask for the county exec. I would assume that whenever we pass them as a body, that they take our intent and sort of at least make an effort to address whatever the, the question is for, that the council poses for them. So I would assume they would make some effort to, to complete that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure I understand this, Mr. Smith, very clearly. So I'm reading, I'm going to just read along as I go. The resolution urges the county executive to establish an adequate public facilities study group to address the need for an electrical grid impact review. So the study group is going to review whether or not a, a general review of the grid is needed for general proposed development, or is it that they're going to review whether or not we need to have, like, APF standards in place to determine that our grid can handle any specific proposed development activity in the future?
So I would tell you the intent behind the resolution. I know the language was, was crafted using a couple of different folks.
Hard once you get into legalese. I'm just trying to translate legalese into clear understanding.
Correct. So I would say the, the intent behind the resolutions, and this is obviously for the record now, is to ensure that the group looks at what, either decisions that are being made or have been made, the evolution of, of the standard house and the commercial industry and how that utilization is Anaronda County set up to be successful when it comes to our power needs here going into the future. And so it's generally, a general review is what I would ask so that we are not, you know, the lights don't get shut off and say, "Oh, what happened?" So now we're trying to get above that, get ahead of that at the moment. So it's not to impose any specific regulatory impacts or effects, but more of a data gathering effort so that we can understand, again, our exposure to the current crisis that exists within certainly the region that Maryland is in because of what's happening in Northern Virginia, as well as what's happening in Pennsylvania. And so some of those could impact us, and it's just a, an opportunity to gather, you know, people who are smarter than me certainly, who, who can look and say, "Yeah, I think, I think we're going to be good. Maybe we need another factory or, or some sort of powers source here in the county." And they can, you know, bring that up, and then we advocate as a council to the state to say, "Yes, we should be doing this." And so it's a, it's a fact-finding effort to ensure that we have all the data to advocate on best, on behalf of the Anaronda County.
Madam Chair, do you mind my follow-up? Just to make sure I under, I think I do understand you. So essentially, it's a fact-finding mission to determine the state of the union, so to speak.
Yeah, the state of our consumption needs and things like that.
Our, our consumption needs and our electric grid. And I guess my follow-up question then might be for the table, which would be, should the state of the union be found insufficient? So should the state of the grid be found insufficient by this study group, if that's what comes out of their report? What ability does Anaronda County have to do anything about that?
So, so it's probably going to be, and they can answer as well, sort of limited to some degree because a lot of our power, DGNE obviously, is our biggest source of power here in Anaronda County. But the ability to, to be armed with the information, to go to the state officials and say, "Yes, we have neighborhoods that are not adequately set up," similar to, to the cable or internet. And, you know, if you look at that as a sort of mirror to this, there are some communities in here that don't have adequate internet access or cell phone coverage. So you have cell towers that have outages in, probably in your neck of the woods more often than up in, in our part of North County. And so, but this is looking at the power to see how that is dispersed throughout the county in a way that's going to make sure we're set up for success. As more development occurs, we want to make sure that those industries are, are sufficiently supplied the energy needs to be successful.
Appreciate it. Office of Law, could you just confirm, just to make sure, advocacy would essentially be the power of the county if we...
Sure. Yeah, as Mr. Hunt, right. As Mr. Hunt mentioned, you know, the, the actual regulation of the electrical industry is through federal and state law. So I, I think that's one of the reasons why this kind of discusses an impact review for new development going forward perhaps, because that's what we could do is look at, see if, what is there is sufficient, but, or advocacy, as you mentioned.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So if the report comes back and the determination is that we need more power in Anaronda County, and in my district, we have two power generation stations, right? We have Brandon Shores and Wagner. And Brandon Shores is set to be decommissioned and go offline. So if the result of this is that we need more power, are you all going to be supportive of lobbying the state to keep Brandon Shores open so that we can ensure we have sufficient electric so that we can make sure that people have the power they need? I just want to understand where this is going. Like, what's the logical end of this? If we're asking for that answer, do we want that answer? I'm curious whether all my colleagues want that answer.
Well, I can, I can say from my side, I can't speak for you all, but, I mean, if the report comes back and says we're highly insufficient with, with some of our needs, I mean, I would be an ally to advocate for any sort of power needs or sources to, to help and ensure our communities and neighbors are taken care of. That's Pete Smith. And so whatever that looks like, if our goal as a state is to evolve into more renewable energies and, and we can help speed that up by standing on people's desks at the State House or in the Federal House, I'll do that as well. And so, you know, but part of this is also knowing what does it look like? What is that information so that we can speak more intelligently about it instead of, you know, because, you know, I've knocked on doors over the last, certainly the last few years, and, and people have complained about it. And I think there's a desire to, to ensure that, just like we have adequate streets and we have adequate school capacity, that, believe it or not, people over, out West are fighting over power needs, believe it or not. And so I don't want that to happen to us and us to be behind and not knowing what our exposure looks like.
People out West are fighting over water, which is going to be...
Well, that's another, that's another thing that's...
Right. But right now, what we're looking at is an electric issue. One of the most important parts of this, though, and I hope that this is something that the study group looks at, is the increased cost of electricity for consumers, because that's something that we're constantly hearing about from all of our constituents is the costs. And as some of my counterparts in my district, Delegate Chisholm, Senator Simonair, Delegate Kipki, they have been big sort of voices on this, talking about how if we take Brandon Shores offline, that power's a huge chunk of central Maryland. And the amount of power that's going to be needed to come in now from the nuclear plant, which is Peach Bottom up in Pennsylvania, to bring that down, and what that looks like to get that power to us, that's going to be exorbitantly expensive. You're seeing these, you know, RMRs where you're seeing massive increases to consumers to be able to power the grid with power from So if the result of this is that Maryland is not enough of a net generator of power and we need more power in our state, I just want to make sure everybody is cool with whatever that end is, we're going to push for that.
So just for the record, Maryland doesn't produce enough power for the, for the consumption that it currently needs. And so, I think their intent is certainly to get to that point. And so, whatever advocacy that needs to happen on my behalf to ensure that, you know, they speed it up, I will certainly do it and be an ally in that quest.
I'll just say this as my last comment on this. You're not going to produce enough power with solar and wind and some of these renewable sources.
Yeah.
You're going to have to look at nuclear, you're going to have to look at some of these what they call core generation capacity for power sources that we need, that are really the backbone of the grid. Because at least as of today, everything that I've heard, and I just want to correct one thing, you said BGE is a generator of power, they're not.
Well, they're delivering, yeah, they deliver a service, yeah.
And so, you know, people get upset with BG&E, and I understand why, because that's who you see. But BGE is the lines that bring it to you, they're not the generator of power.
Correct.
And the problem is, if we can't generate enough core power, all these additional things that we're looking at and doing with renewables, all well and good, but if the wind doesn't blow, if the sun doesn't shine, we got problems.
Ms. Rodbien.
I hope that my colleagues here are advocating for the now apparently controversial wind facility that is now in jeopardy in Ocean City. Just thought I would mention that. I think there are other ways that we're not looking at. One of the things that I learned on the trip that I was able to take to Sweden is that there are a lot of things that we are not tapping into, like geothermal. We are, you know, we should be building every building in the county, whether it's a school or a county building, and we should be encouraging residents to build their structures so that they can accommodate solar panels because a lot of folks now are literally net zero in their homes because they have solar panels. Obviously, if you have a lot of shade, that's tricky, but we have to think outside of the box. I, we had another, this past Thursday, and I know Annapolis was not the only part of the county impacted, but we had another top-ten flub. We keep breaking our own records because of the impacts of climate change. It wasn't from the hurricane, it wasn't even a significant rainstorm. We, but we hit four feet, and downtown businesses in Annapolis are flooding again. And so we really need to be thinking, I'm just frustrated that we're, I mean, I understand, yes, we need energy, but we've got to start thinking about it in different ways and not just coal, coal, coal. And so, with respect to your resolution, I'm definitely on board with the concept. I'm, I don't know enough about the, about the topic generally to know if this is something that's a meaningful conversation at the county level. But it certainly is, it seems that, you know, at least finding out the state of where things are, it's always better to know.
Any other comments? All right, we will now open the hearing on Resolution Number 3225. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 3225? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution Number 3225 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill, of Resolution Number 3225.
Resolution Number 3225, Resolution Urging the Establishment of an Adequate Public Facilities Study Group to Address the Need for an Electrical Grid Impact Review for New Development.
Madam, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 3225.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution Number 3225 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8125.
Bill Number 8125, Inordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate Public Facilities, Adequate Transportation Facilities, Mitigation Fees and Securities Development Impact Fee Credits.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table, I have Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, Greg Swain, our County Attorney, Sarah Fowler, our Planning and Trans, our Planning Administrator for Transportation Development from the Office of Planning and Zoning, David Braun, our Engineer Administrator from the Department of Public Works, and Brian Ulrich, our Planning Administrator from the Office of Transportation. As was discussed previously, Bill 8125 proposes revisions to the county's current traffic APF law by replacing it with a transportation APF to look at not just roads, but also bike, pedestrian and transit and multimodal tests, as well as making some changes around impact fee credits. And I'll turn it over to my panel if anyone else wants to add anything additional. We do have one amendment that we'll discuss at the appropriate time. Until then, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, discussions? All right, go ahead. We will not hold a public hearing on this bill this evening. The public hearing closed on October 20th, and the vote of this bill was held until this evening. And there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment adds an application for a concept plan to those applications grandfathered and extends the grandfathering provisions for certain applications to March 1, 2026.
Administration?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt, that's exactly what this does. It extends the current grandfathering provision in the bill, which has already passed, and pushes it out to March 1st of next year. And also adds that concept plans are grandfathered under this bill.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All right, discussion, Ms. Pickard?
So I've had the opportunity to discuss this amendment with some folks on the administration. They know I have a concern with a project that is underway, our redevelopment project at 7409, which has been negotiated in, in different terms, it's a quasi-public-private partnership, if that's a, that's a legitimate term, which, which by its sheer nature and development is going through a somewhat different process. So I just want to hear from those at the table that in your negotiations with, with the project group that is undertaking that, everyone feels like they are going to be coming forward with a concept plan, which, which essentially grandfathers that project because there's things that have been negotiated as to connectivity and multimodal in the terms of that sale of the property and things like that. So are we comfortable with, that this puts them in a good position?
Yes, Jansen, on behalf of the administration, yes, Councilmember Pickard, that's accurate. Greg Swain and I, we worked very closely on that particular deal, and we obviously want to ensure that those, that the discussions, the negotiations that we reached, those are something that will be honored, which is why we also included, as, as Mr. Hunt already noted, included concept plans which would cover and encapsulate 7409 BNA.
Madam Chair. So at this moment in time, it's November 3rd, you fully expect to have concept plans by March from that project?
We do.
Okay. I'll take that to the bank.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Everybody at the table agrees that this bill, 8125, is an important piece of legislation, right? Okay, everybody agrees this piece of legislation is going to make Anaronda County better and all developments in Anaronda County better, right?
Yes.
Why in the world would we grandfather something? Why wouldn't we make the people coming through the pipeline have to use this good new bill that we like, that we've spent all this time developing?
I can just quickly say, I know that the language says that it extends, but it also, it fixes, I think originally a draft in the era in the bill which had a grandfathering provision that had already passed. So I want to be very clear about that.
But why are we grandfathering anybody? We all agree this is a good bill, this is going to make development better, this is important for Anaronda County? Why are we grandfathering? This is something we should want.
So again, as Councilmember Pickard and I just discussed on the record, we also want to be very clear and, and with this redevelopment project at 7409 BNA. But outside of that, grandfathering provisions is something that's typically negotiated, whether it's from the administration's perspective or the, or the council's perspective. Whether it was done at the time the bill is enacted, or at the end of the fiscal year, or at, what is this particular date, or at March 1st. The administration were comfortable with extending the provisions of, when this bill will go into effect until then.
Okay.
Other discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Amendment Number One has been adopted.
All right, Bill Number 8125 as amended will be heard on November 17th, 2025. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the County Council at this time? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Did I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, the County Council is adjourned until Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, at 9:00 AM for our council work session here in our chambers. Please note that our work session is not on a Tuesday, is now on a Tuesday as the county will be closed, no, is not on a Tuesday as the county will be closed for recognition of Veterans Day.